Good evening and welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. We are here today for special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for those who are here this evening and for those watching at home. We have just come from executive session. We will be returning to executive session after this. It's a quick special meeting, but a very important one. We have two very exciting appointments this evening. And then we will have a board workshop, which is our budget presentation. So we'll start. Did you have any comments, Carl, that you wanted to start with? Or we're going to just start right into the business of the board?
I would say let's go into the business first and we'll comment later.
And we'll comment as we go along. Okay. Number one, to appoint a principal. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint John Marash to a four-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of principal at the William Y. Cottle Elementary School effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2022 at a salary of $160,000 for the 2018-19 school year. John Marash holds School Building Leader and Childhood Education 1 through 6 Professional Certifications. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
I'd like to just give a little bit of a background here. The district posted for our elementary principal position shortly after New Year's. We received a very strong response of 125 applicants. And Dr. McDonald and I initially went through screenings. We went through each and every resume very carefully. We organized a site-based committee. We had PPLT members on that committee. We had teachers. We had administrators. And also our civil service represented. We went through a very thorough process with, I believe it was seven candidates at the committee level. Then after that, we narrowed down the pool to three candidates who interviewed with our administrative team, and that was the entire admin team. And it was unanimous after that that one candidate clearly stood out. We basically started to delve into references very, very carefully. Mr. John Marash works in Pleasantville, but he has an interesting background. He first started in parochial schools. He was a teacher, athletic director at Iona Lower School. Then he moved on to the Resurrection School in Rye, which has a great reputation. He was the assistant principal there. And then he went into public education, starting at the Pleasantville School District a number of years back. And the Pleasantville District could not say enough in the way of positive praise and compliments about his work. Not only is he the assistant principal of the Bedford Road Elementary School, he also handled all the data analysis for the entire district. The superintendent there, Mary Fox, I know for many, many years, and she has high, high standards. And without question, if there was a principal vacancy in Pleasantville, John would have been the principal. So I think it's our good fortune that there was no vacancy right now in Pleasantville, and we were able to lure him into Tuckahoe. And I really believe he will do an amazing job for us and is a great fit for our elementary school. So John, turn it over to the board.
All in favor?
We have to vote. Make it official. So John, why don't you come and shake hands and if you want to say a few words?
Good luck to you. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you so much. So again, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Aldano. Thank you all members of the Board of Education for your support, for your trust, and for this incredible opportunity. I knew right away that Tuckahoe is a very special place, and I'm just so excited at the opportunity to join the Tuckahoe and Cottle School team. I'm excited to work with the Cottle School teachers, the staff, the parents, as partners in the continued success of the Cottle School students. My wife, Maura, is here this evening. Our three little ones are at home. I often call Maura the glue that holds the puzzle together. And with the three little ones that we have at home, and Maura, you know, she's been in preschool and elementary education and educator for about 15 years. So with all that, we understand the value and the importance in a strong elementary education. And I know she shares this excitement with me. I also noticed that some members of the Bedford Road School community are here this evening. And to them, I say, you know, thank you so much for your support, for your guidance, and for your friendship. Of course, you all know you are like family to me. But again, I say, thank you so much. I am very, very excited to begin my journey in Tuckahoe and with the Cottle School, and I know there are great things to come. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Okay. Number two, appoint a Director of Special Education. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint John Spatola to a four-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of Director of Special Education effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2022 at a salary of $160,000 for the 2018-19 school year. Joseph Spatola holds School District Leader and Students with Disabilities 7 through 12 Social Studies Professional Certifications. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion.
Just again, a quick background on process. We had 66 applicants for the Director of Special Ed position. Dr. McDonald and I went through each and every applicant and narrowed down the pool to 12 to come in for a screening interview. Then after that, we had six people return back to interview with the site-based team. Again, we had parent reps, we had teacher reps, we had administrators. And then we brought two finalists to the administrative level. Joseph was one of those two, and he had strong competition. But once again, it seemed to be that there was a clear choice after careful vetting. The next phase was to call references. And Joseph gave us a number of references of people that he's worked with for a long time. I knew someone personally up in Lakeland, Ms. Jean Michio, the Assistant Superintendent, so I thought I should give her a call. We go back about 20 years. And Jean just said, in a similar response to what I received when I called for John, "Oh, my God, you're taking him from us. You know, he is fantastic, and this is our loss. But I can't give him a higher recommendation and can't say enough about his knowledge, his dedication to children with special needs." So Joseph has served as the Assistant Coordinator of Special Education in Lakeland. It's a very large district. He had a very rigorous schedule up there. I think there's pretty much nothing that he hasn't been able to handle, doing hundreds of annual reviews. And it sounds like the difference he's made in his students' lives is really significant. And there's no doubt in my mind that he will continue that here in Tuckahoe. So we heard a baby crying, and it's nice to see that we have some children here, because of course, this is all about the children. But I can't give Joseph a stronger recommendation to the board. I think he is the right person to be our Director of Special Ed.
All in favor? Congratulations. Good luck to you.
You're going to learn very quickly. I'll be the shortest-winded member of the administrative team. Wherever I go, it's, you know, we can say it very quickly. I can tell you from day one when I met with Ellen, it was pretty clear this was a job I wanted. And I walked out of here saying, "This is something, this is a place that feels right. It's a place that I can make a difference." And I'm just so much humbled by the response I've gotten from everybody that I've met with through the interview process. It seems like an exciting place to work. I'm, you know, you come from a big place to a small place, and I really feel like that's the piece. I know my kids, I know my staff in here. I could do that even better and really focus on how do we make Tuckahoe a better place? Everything I've heard, as I did my own research, was, "Don't turn them down. It's a great place." So it comes down to the same thing. So I'm just looking forward to really taking a good special ed program, taking it to places we haven't been, make it better. You know, you get me and my family. Margaret, if, as you could hear her go, I apologize, but she's excited to be here. And both, Clara said, we gave her a choice. We said, "You can go to Grandma's or you can come here." And she said, "I want to go see where you're going to work." So, you know, you have all of us, and I'm just looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay. Number three, increase the teaching load. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby amends resolution G2 from its meeting on January 22nd, 2018 to reflect Daniela Sinetta's appointment as a temporary part-time teacher of speech and hearing as follows. January 22nd, 2018 to February 11th, 2018, .2 full-time equivalent position. February 12th, 2018 to April 10th, 2018, .28 full-time position. April 11th, 2018 to June 30th, 2018, .36 full-time position. Ms. Sinetta shall be paid on step MA4 of the TTA salary schedule prorated based upon her full-time position. Is there a motion? Dash, second. Rob, discussion.
Yeah, just that this is required by children's IEPs, and Joseph will be handling this responsibility next year. But it was a mandate, and we have students that sometimes, you know, enter mid-year or late in the school year, where sometimes the Committee on Special Education makes a decision and implements a service. So this is required as per IEPs.
All in favor? Number four, accept a resignation. Resolved to accept the resignation of Ashley Rivera effective March 20th, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dash, discussion. All in favor? Okay. We're going to move on now to our budget presentation. We'll take one minute just to congratulate our two new members of our Tuckahoe family, and then we will reconvene for our workshop in just a quick, quick minutes. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move forward now with our workshop, which is our budget presentation. I should have mentioned earlier that the polls are still open for our bond vote, and they will be open until 9:00 PM. We then will reconvene after the presentation of the budget to report on the results. So let's go forward with the budget presentation now. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So this is the third presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget. Based on the feedback that I received last week, I added some items to the budget. We also received a small amount of additional state aid. In addition, between the last meeting and this meeting, I met with the Budget Advisory Committee, and we discussed the budget and various options that might present themselves in order to change the budget based on the last meeting. So what I'd like to begin with is just a more in-depth discussion of this tax cap calculation. I know it's a complicated formula that is sometimes difficult to understand all the components of it, so I wanted to go through it a little bit more carefully so that people can understand how we determine how we can raise our tax levies in the district. And the tax cap in New York State applies to all school districts in the state, and it limits the growth in property taxes that are levied by school districts. It's known as a 2% tax cap, but that number is a misnomer. It's actually, there's a formula that New York State provides us to determine the size of the tax levy increase that the district is permitted to make, the maximum increase. And that's limited by the New York State-provided growth factors that they give to every district in the state. There are two growth factors in the New York State tax cap calculation. There's the allowable growth factor, which is also what is thought of as the 2%, and there's also another factor called the tax base growth factor, and I'll go into both of those. The allowable growth factor is, as I said, what was known as the 2% tax cap. And that is a growth factor of the CPI for the previous year or 2%, whichever is lower. For 2018-19, the CPI was slightly over 2%, so 2% is lower, and that's what our allowable growth factor is. It's the first time in many years that it's been as high as the maximum, at 2%. And we receive that number and all the other numbers in this calculation from the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance. The second growth factor in the tax cap is what's known as the tax base growth factor. And that is a growth factor based on the change to the real, the full value of the taxable real property in the school district. And that's when there are increases due to physical changes in the district or number of homes or physical, as I said, physical changes or number of homes or properties in the district. It's growth due to new construction, additions, improvements to real property. It can never be less than one, so you can't have a reduction in your growth. But the state provides us with a growth factor, and there's typically a lag in the amount of growth in a district and the timing of when the state provides us with a growth factor. This year, the growth factors around the state are significantly higher than they've been in the past, and our growth factor is 1.33% or, well, the percentage change is 1.33%, and our growth factor is 1.0133. So that is a number. We're also permitted to multiply our prior year tax levy and come up with a new tax levy maximum for this year. So if we multiply both factors together that we've been given, the 1.33% and the 2%, if you multiply those together, the two factors, you'll see that we're actually permitted a 1.0336 growth factor or 3.36%. So it's not a 2% tax cap. It's actually 3.36 plus a few adjustments for exclusions and other parts of the formula that actually bring our tax cap up to 3.49%. And what we found then, doing our entire formula, is our maximum allowable tax levy, which requires a 50% plus one vote in the district for approval, allows us to go as high as 3.49% over the prior year levy. That's the whole complicated formula that we're given by the state. We provide that to them, and they put it on file up in the Albany Archives. And as you can see, that would permit us 946,724 additional dollars to levy, or 3.49%. Now, there's also something that's known as a property tax relief credit. It's a program that was begun in 2016. It's being phased in by the state, and it will be fully phased in by 2019. The program reduces the property tax burden for qualifying homeowners. And every homeowner, if they're eligible for the credit, will automatically receive a check from New York State to offset their property taxes. In order to be considered eligible to get the credit, you must live in a school district that is complying with the New York State property tax cap. That means your tax levy must be under that maximum formula that I just showed you. You also must have, you must receive either the basic or enhanced star exemption or credit. You must have an income of $275,000 or less in your household, and you must have paid property taxes in the prior year. If all four of those things are true, the homeowner will receive the tax credit from New York State. And the proposed 2018-19 budget that I'm presenting to you tonight is compliant with the property tax cap, so that if this budget is approved by the community, all eligible homeowners will receive their property tax credit relief. Following last week, our last meeting with the Board of Education, they added the following to the superintendent's proposed budget. Two security monitors of approximately $75,000. Classroom, library, furniture refurbishments and other refurbishments of about $55,000. And a transfer to capital line to provide for security upgrades in the district, including additional cameras, access controls, and exterior lighting. Fire alarm system upgrades, classroom floor and ceiling renovations, painting, roof and masonry repairs. The budget, I should have included one more slide that I took out. But what we're proposing for the budget, let's go back to here. We're proposing $34,025,500. That's our budget expenditure budget with all the items that we've talked about over the past few meetings. Our baseline budget with a 2.98 tax levy increase would provide us with $32,586,894. So our budget gap is $1,438,656. And how do we propose to close the budget gap? We had additional state aid revenues of net of $42,000. We plan to appropriate or recommend appropriating a fund balance of $1,438,656. And as I said before, we plan to, we recommend that we levy a 2.98% increase in our levy to provide the tax revenues that we need to close the budget. And that will provide us with a balanced budget. It will avoid cuts to balance the budget. It will also not necessitate an additional tax levy to the district. We will use some funds from our savings funds to fund the budget. Here's a history of our fund balance over the last eight years. As you can see, it's fluctuated from year to year. We've gone up a bit this year. We consider there's significant increases in staffing over this year and next year and other reasons that we've raised the budget to the level that we have. And so this year, we anticipate we will need $1.4 million in fund balance to balance our budget. We still don't know certain things about next year's expenditures. We won't know all the tax certioris and petitions and judgments that will come in next year. We still have a significant and healthy fund balance for tax certioris, as well as a small amount budgeted for current year tax certioris. We still are waiting to find exact staffing levels based on enrollment that we'll see throughout the summer and any other new things that may arise. Here's a history of our tax levy and our budgets, the increases. As you can see, for the last five years, our budgets go up and down, our tax levy go up and down based on the amount that we're permitted to raise or lower by state, as well as the funds that we'll use. And on our five-year average for our tax levy increase is well below the 2% number that people have, are familiar with around the tax cap, and we've been averaging 1.45%. Our budget increases have also fluctuated over the years through various ways of looking for efficiencies and spending saving and savings. We've been able to keep our tax, our budget increases to a five-year average of 1.99%. And that includes this year's budget increase as well. Here it is graphically. What you can see in this graph is the number, the bar on the left, the lighter colored bar is our percent change in our budget and corresponds with the darker colored bar, which is our tax levy percent change. And then the line across the top is our enrollment increase. So what you can see is over the last five years, as our enrollment has increased over 10%, our tax and budget increases have been relatively smaller in comparison. And only this year, even though our enrollment has gone up significantly over the past five years, this is the first year we've really raised our budget more than in prior years to account for some of those differences, as we've also tightened in other areas. And so finally, important dates to remember. Next week, the budget will be adopted by the Board of Education. On Monday, May 7th, there'll be a public hearing on the adopted budget. And then on Tuesday, May 15th, there'll be a budget vote and a trustee election, and the polls will be in the same polling places from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And there are now, as we've been saying for the last two elections, there are now only two election districts. That will be the same in May. District A, that is west of Midland Avenue, will vote at the community center, and District B, east of Midland Avenue, will vote at the Cottle Elementary School. And that's it. Any questions?
Lee, just to clarify for those watching, make sure it's clear. We're allowed a 3.46% tax levy increase. This budget calls for a 2.98% increase.
Right. We're recommending not going to the full amount in our tax levy. We propose 2.98% increase only, and the remainder will come out of other revenues as well as our appropriated fund balance.
Good. Okay.
And Lee, I know you presented it before, and you may not have this number off the top of your head, but what, what is the dollar amount of just like the contractual obligations, you know, the increase from the budget from year to year?
The budget, the total budget expenditures? I do have that. So the budget is increasing by $1,522,651. We're proposing a $34,025,500 budget, and that's an increase of 4.68%.
So what portion of that is just contractual obligations of that increase? Would you know that?
That number I don't have.
Yeah.
Does that know to be total instruction?
Yeah.
Total instruction and benefits? It's 762,000 for total instruction and employee benefits, 470,000.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. I was very pleased to see the increase in the security monitor. So this budget that's being proposed does have the two additional security monitors.
That's right.
So thank you for that. And also, there had been conversation about the increase for the additional classrooms of refurbishing. So the number that you quoted there of the $55,000 was the additional money that was put towards that. Money had already been allocated at the prior presentation, so the $55,000 is to do an additional amount of classrooms. I believe the total is now 15 classrooms will be refurbished. So I'm very pleased to hear that. Those were conversations that we had, requests from not only parents, but also from our teaching staff. So very happy to see that.
Our own observations as well.
Our own observations as well, when we toured the building, yes. And also the additional allocation of the $100,000 for capital improvements. And I just think, you know, all the years of that I've been working on the budget, I think this is really the good time, the perfect time, to be allocating money towards capital improvements. Because as we all know, the formula fluctuates, you know, every year what our allowable tax levy will be from year to year. And when we have an increase this year, it seems just totally appropriate to do capital improvements with some of that money, because we cannot plan year to year what will be the year after that. So it is a good time to make some capital improvements, things that we are in desire and need for. So thank you for that. I think that was really well thought out and really a good plan for the capital improvements. Anybody have anything else to add on that?
No, I agree with Michelle. I think it's perfect timing to use it when it's going to be for this year only when we have the money. It makes all the sense in the world. I guess just, just to clarify, one of the reasons why we have that big number, the 3.49 is our allowable limit, that has a lot to do with the development and construction, right? I think that's important that people are aware of that. And that's a town-by-town specific event. So it's not something that happens throughout the state. It depends on what's happened in your town. And that's why this year just happens to be that we have that big allowable number. And that's why that 3.4 is so well, you know, above that, too, that we hear about a lot.
As well as the inflation growth factor.
Yeah.
Both hit this year on that level.
And I think, Lee, you had said at the previous meeting that sometimes it takes a little time for the catch-up. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean that all that growth happened last year, but it takes some time for it to catch up, and it's hitting us now. And again, it all just seems so very appropriate. We are feeling the strains in our infrastructure, in our buildings, of the growth, and it seems only right to spend the money to meet up with those, with that growth factor. So it makes sense. I really do think that the numbers make sense, and we have been feeling the enrollment growth over the past several years, as your presentation indicated, yet we were not putting the money into the infrastructure to keep up with that. So I think we're all doing the right things with the increase at this time, and to me, it all makes a lot of sense.
Just one last comment, too. Lee, maybe it's helpful to also explain, too, that a 2.98 increase in the tax levy doesn't mean that an individual homeowner sees a 2.98 increase.
No, it depends on their own assessed value of their homes,
Right.
which can go up and down depending on if they've done any improvements. Which can go up and down depending on if they've done any improvements, as well as the total value of the entire community can go up and down based on any large tax certioris or new growth in the district. And we won't even know exactly what the total value is for the community until the summer. We get those numbers from the assessor.
That's something new that I learned from being on the board. I always, when I heard these numbers, I just assumed that meant my tax bill was going up by that percentage, but that's not, that's not the case.
No.
And I think that was a really important screen to show, the history over the last five years, and what the tax levy, those very low numbers, the average over the last five years has been a 1.49, let's say 1.5% over five years, and that, that's stressed, that's a very low number.
Right.
And we have maintained that. And, you know, one of the things is that there is a benefit to the taxpayer, because there is that property relief as, you know, when, when you stay within the, with the tax cap, then basically the school district is rewarded by the state for doing that, and there is some money that goes back to the taxpayer for that. So I, you know, it, you know, we're staying within. I think we're doing all the right things, and, you know, it all makes a lot of sense to me. So I, thank you, because I know it was a lot of hard work and a lot of changes and a lot of things that have been thrown at you over the last couple of weeks. So thank you for that, Lee.
Yeah, thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I think it makes, it's mentioned again, it's mentioned often, we, when we talk about the budget, is we talk about our fund reserve and how we have these reserves. And I think, well, here's an example. I'd be, by doing what the board has done over the last five or six years and creating these reserves, you have a year like this year where we're able to use fund balance to pay for some of these things. And I think that shows that you were being responsible then, and now we're able to benefit from those actions. So again, I think, good job, and well done. Thanks.
And I think also the opportunity where we're creating, where we're taking on less debt by these future bonds for tax certs, is going to allow us in the future to do more capital projects and to do more, you know, larger bonds, because we won't have that added debt. And then it frees up, as the debt falls off, it will free up opportunities to make more improvements. So I, I think it's been a long time coming. I mean, there's, you, you see the plan, and now it's all really, all coming into place. And, you know, I'm, I'm pleased with it. I think it looks good.
Lastly, I just want to also compliment Lee. It's been a pleasure working with her on this year's budget. For those people that don't understand, the, the budget process starts very early in the school year. Lee, back in December, was meeting with each and every administrator, analyzing past spending trends, also projecting ahead. And it's difficult, you know, in December, you're projecting for the year ahead. It's not always an exact science, and it evolves, but we've had three public presentations to this point. They are all on our website, so anyone that would like to see the development process can see from, from our first presentation till now and how we ended up here. And Lee, I really want to compliment you, you know, the slides where you, you took a view of a five-year tax levy increase and, and budget increase. I think it's very important that you emphasize to our community that you need to look over time, because this, this formula, which is a complicated one, varies year to year. So two years ago, we were allowed to increase 4 tenths of a percent of the allowable tax levy increase. Last year, 8 tenths of a percent. This year, the allowable is much higher. But when you look at that average, you know, our allowable for five years has been under 1 and 1/2%. And I think it's important to educate our community and for the people that are following this process to, to understand that. And I also compliment you on looking, showing enrollment over five years. So that's increased 10%. Of course, that drives staffing needs, and staffing, as most people know, is 75 to 80% of our budget. That's the biggest driver, and I think it was, you know, very smart for you to show, as enrollment increased, so did our needs and our budget. And I compliment you on, on a very comprehensive presentation tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Allison? Okay. Okay. So then I think we will, we're not going to adjourn our meeting, because we are going back into executive session, and then we will, we will return with the results of our vote tonight.
Approximately 10:15.
That late?
Yes, we have a lot of absentee ballots, I'm told.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Okay, good evening. We have returned now a little earlier than we had planned. We do have the results from our capital project vote. So there is a resolution to accept the results of the bond referendum. Resolve to accept the results of the bond referendum proposition. Yes, 836, no, 348. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Okay, so that's great news, right? We're very happy. We have passed, it's about a 70-30 margin. I would like to especially thank the efforts of the PTA, Allison Halloran, and her entire team who are out there really hitting the pavement, literally going door to door. They were really a well-oiled machine, very organized, to help get the word out on this project. It has been two very long years to get to this point. We are very, very excited for the future of our district, for our children, and couldn't be any happier this evening than we are right now. So thank you, thank you, our community, for supporting our schools, for supporting our children, and, and believing that this is the right thing for us. So thank you to all who voted this evening, and good luck as we move forward. That's it.
If I could just add, on behalf of the entire district, I, I think such a solid margin, I think demonstrates the commitment of this community to its school district. And, and also, we appreciate that, that the community has placed its trust in all of us to move forward with this project. I think it will dramatically improve the qualities here in Tukahau, starting with that classroom space and those safety upgrades that, that are so much needed. So we will not let you down. We will make sure that this project is, is followed through on, and you will get regular updates from all of us. And we are very excited to move forward with the design phase of it, as well as the approval process. And then by the summer of 2019, we will see the construction begin.
I mean, if you, if recall, Carl, just to add to that, at our very last meeting, we already have wheels in motion. So we, we are moving forward. We have our, our plans going forward. We do have our project manager lined up. We are ready to go. So we are in, in great shape and very excited, so.
If I may, just, I'd like to just take the opportunity, I'd like to thank my fellow board members from last year, the current board members, of course, Lauren Chou, who handled all the votes, the last one in December, this one today. We've just been at it now probably 13, 14 hours. So thank you to Lauren. Thank you to the community. It's exciting, so I'm looking forward to working toward the project.
I'm really proud of the community, especially the, the amount of involvement that we saw this time around. The boots-on-the-ground movement was really impressive, and whether you agree with it or not, obviously, you know where we lie, just the, the involvement and the participation was just great to see, really, really great to see. It's just a great day for our kids. It's a great day for our kids.
Yeah, it was exciting to watch, like seeing, oh, as the polls went up, how many people were out there, as opposed to last time. So that was exciting. And again, thanks to the efforts of the PTA who really made sure everybody was informed and to get out there and vote.
Yeah. A nice job by you too, Carl. Really, really good job.
Thank you. A lot, a lot of work, a lot of hours, so much appreciated.
It was a team effort, everybody.
Okay, so we will adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Dash, second. Pete, all in favor? Good night. Thank you.